I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, united states, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Burns.
Collins.
Here.
Herbie.
Here.
Holt.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Ness.
Here.
Yes, I would move to excuse Councilman Burns.
Second.
Let it be known by a silent voting, aye?
Aye.
Post, Councilman Burns is excused. Item number two is minutes. You should have all received copies of the minutes. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a correction to the...
Yes? Yes?
Uh, yes. Um, in paragraph E, uh, it says, "Miss Collins expressed concerns with not having the motion in writing and the clerk was directed to read the motion again in full." Miss Collins asked Mr. Wykoff whether proper procedure for her objections because she felt the motion was overly broad. Um, and Mr. Wykoff stated, "The motion is made by the council body and if the body agrees that it is overly broad, then they can vote against it." I would like inserted after, um, "Procedure for her objections because she felt the motion was overly broad." I would like it inserted that Mr. Wykoff never answered my question about the proper procedure for, uh, voicing my objection.
Um, I'm not sure that you can add to minutes. You can make corrections or, or I should ask for a ruling from the, from Sally.
Okay, I'm a little confused because you're saying that he never answered your question?
Correct.
But what I put in the minutes was his answer in response. So you want in there, you want it added that he never answered...
Answered my, the question that I posed. He never answered that. He instead answered a different question.
Okay. Right. I can only, I can't, I can only put in the minutes what occurred. So by me putting in the response that John gave you, that's what actually happened in the meeting. So if I add what you want to say as far as he didn't answer your question, that's me adding more into the minutes.
Oh, I would, I would say to resolve the issue, uh, as I stated before, you, we, we could make corrections to the minutes or whatever, but if you want that, if you want that noted in, in a minute, I'd suggest that, uh, it'd be noted into, in this meeting's minutes because it didn't occur last meeting.
Okay, and when is the proper time for me to...
You just, you just did it. So she, she would, yeah.
It'll be added into tonight.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Item number three, presentations. Business of the Month Award, Glendale Body Shop, Mr. Brown.
Did, do we have, did we have to vote on the minutes or just accept it as presented?
Minutes are accepted as presented. It doesn't require a vote.
Mayor, members of council, thank you very much. Our April Business of the Month recently celebrated its 60th anniversary. Much of that time spent here in Forest Park. Glendale Body Shop is one of the premier auto body repair and service shops here in greater Cincinnati. Family owned and operated, this collision repair center has an honest and dependable staff that can restore your vehicle back to its pre-accident condition. From minor damage and repairs to major body work and insurance repairs, Glendale, uh, Glendale Body Shop is the first and best choice to bring your car back to life. Established in 1957, GBS has a well-earned reputation for top-notch, reliable and unsurpassed service. Indeed, the company has not had a single complaint, not one, to the Better Business Bureau, Better Business Bureau in its entire history. That's an impressive and noteworthy accomplishment. Their shop features state-of-the-art equipment, expert technicians with the training needed to address any challenge. Originally started with a focus on Chevy Corvettes, Glendale Body Shop now provides service for all makes and models, foreign and domestic. The company is a preferred vendor by all major insurance companies. Perhaps what stands out the most is their commitment to ongoing training. For example, company technicians once recently traveled to the Audi plant in Germany for training on their aluminum car bodies. That's just one example of their commitment to superior service. Of course, it should come as no surprise that the Dameron family also supports a variety of community activities and events, and I know that Rachel, uh, I know that Roger and Celeste have, uh, some things that they want to talk to you about when they come up to accept the award. We often call attention to newer companies for investments in the city. However, equally important are long-term members of our business community who contribute to the strength of our local economy on an ongoing basis. Forest Park is fortunate to have a successful business like Glendale Body Shop as a member of our business community, and we wish the company 60 more years of success at its Forest Park location. And with that, I'd like to invite Roger and Celeste up to accept the award.
Congratulations and thank you very much for being in Forest Park. Thank you.
Thank you.
Me.
We want to picture with you.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, council members and residents of Forest Park. It is with great honor that I accept this award on behalf of our family and Glendale Body Shop, Inc. Roger's father had a vision. In 1955, he seen the first Corvette roll off the showrooms, and he said to himself, "I'm gonna have a repair shop. They're gonna need me for fiberglass." And in 1957, he founded Glendale Body Shop. Dad believed in something. He believed in integrity, pride in your work, and treat everybody like their family, and that holds true till today. Um, we're a one-stop body shop with onsite towing, rental car and everything. You just leave your car, leave it to us, and we take care of everything. For certain people who are in the medical facility and our police officers, we do a concierge service where I will come and get the car and bring it back to them repaired. Um, with over a hundred and something years' experience, total combined experience in the automotive industry, we have all kind of, um, connections and assets to make your car the best it can be. With that being said, I did not know we were getting an award this month, but I had planned for May 17th to be Forest Park Appreciation Day, and I will bring flyers, et cetera, and everything and post it. And what we're doing is honoring the municipal workers in the city of Forest Park. Our firefighters and our men in blue come down from 11:30 to 2:00 to have lunch with me. I'm gonna grill out and have a few things, and if you want to walk through the facility, we'll explain how things are done. Um, and once again, as Celeste Dameron, your voice of Glendale Body Shop and customer service specialist and my hubby, we'd like to say thank you on behalf of my mother-in-law, Cora Dameron, who still is alive and couldn't be here this evening. Um, thank you again for making this happen, and you guys will hear tons more from me. Besides the cookout, we have a car club meeting, a car show we're gonna do in July. I have a pending date. I'm trying to coordinate two other clubs. In October, we do our big shindig, and that's where we have music, live entertainment, games, prizes, everything unique, car show with a trophy again, and that date will be announced as well. So thank you.
Thank you again very much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Present today.
First of all, I want to congratulate you and thank you so much for being in the, the city for so long. But I also want to thank you so much for recognizing our police and firefighters. I really appreciate that.
Any other comments from anyone else?
Uh, it was interesting because yesterday, well, not yesterday, it was Sunday, but this morning when I was leaving Bethany after dropping the kids off, I went by your old location, um, you know, just over the railroad tracks. And so, uh, it's just fitting that, of course, we would see you this evening, but, um, yeah, I've heard very good things about you, so I'm eager to utilize your services. And so, thank you so much for the work that you've done and also for the work, especially with, uh, the police.
Yeah. Right. Sure.
And again, your Forest Park location is, the address?
Ashburn.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move to item number four, but before we do as usual, um, if you, you're welcome to stay. You don't have to. Paul usually will show you out, but thanks again for coming. I appreciate it. Okay? Item number five, communication from the public. This is a time for citizens to comment on matters before council or to ask questions of concern to them. We recognize, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and then state your comments or questions. Council meetings are taped recorded for ease of transcriptions. If any member of the public would like to address council, now would be the time for you to come forward, sign in, tell us, uh, who you are.
Hello, everyone. My name is Sydney Battle.
And I'm Alexia Ball.
And we work with the Ohio Equity Institute. The Ohio Equity Institute is funded through the Ohio Department of Health, and I'm actually a Hamilton County employee, but Ohio Equity Institute pays my salary. And, um, what I wanted to talk about is what we are doing in the community. I, um, work in the community as well as Alexia. She works at...
Oh, sorry. Um, I work at a Gopay Children's Center, right? It's like our gosh, pretty much.
All right, and what we are doing in the community is basically trying to lower the infant mortality rate. So overall, Hamilton County has a really high infant mortality rate, and to go into more details in regards to Forest Park, um, so to give this one step, from 2012 to 2016, non-Hispanic black infants in the 45240 zip code died at a rate 22.9 per 1,000. That is nearly three and a half times higher than their non-Hispanic white counterparts. So the way in which we chose our hotspot zip codes, 45240 being one, is that they have high, high levels of racial disparities. When I look at racial disparities, I look at a rate not improving. So Forest Park, they have had this rate, and it's been steadily not improving. So what we're doing in the community is we have a downstream effort as well as an upstream effort. Um, with our upstream effort, it hasn't really hit Forest Park yet. We're still trying to figure out how we can maneuver, maneuver that. But upstream and our other zip code, 45225, we are working with Tennessee CPS schools and implementing a health education curriculum. And for our downstream initiative, we have here advocates, one being Ms. Alexia Ball, in which we, they hold safe sleep and reproductive life planning classes. The reproductive life planning classes focus around family planning, spacing, and nutrition, and safe sleep really talks about the ABCs of safe sleep. So what a safe sleep environment looks like, uh, what, how to lay your baby, if, if, like, how to lay your baby, um, cold, cold sleeping and things of that nature. Um, I'll let Alexia talk more about her experiences with, um, safety classes in Forest Park because she's hosted, I believe, you, three so far, and I'll let her talk about the impact that it's had so far.
Okay, so I'm Alexia. I'm a fair advocate. Um, and I've done three, uh, trainings so far. Um, one was with, uh, if you know NECO, the foster agency. I did the independent living girls, and, uh, some boys attended as well. Um, I've done, um, some home educators, and then at Agape, I did a session that was open to the public as well as to the teachers who were there. Um, and as she said before, we go through some of like the co-bedding and stuff. We talk about, um, the sleeping environment within the home, where your baby should sleep, what they should and should not be sleeping with. Um, they really shouldn't be sleeping with anything. It's the ABCs alone back in crib. Um, and then we talk about keeping smoking away and just different stuff that, um, obviously infant mortality, there's not really a cure for it, but we talk about preventable factors for it. Um, and with each different training, um, I learn something new, they learn something new, and I think that's the really good part about the training that we're doing is that everybody comes out, whether they're teenagers, whether they're adults, whether they're educators, they learn something new, whether it's facts or just something as simple as, "Oh, uh, I shouldn't be sleeping with my baby," something that maybe we seem, that to us seems so simple they, um, didn't know that before. Um, and so I think it's really important what we're doing, um, because we're giving everybody opportunities to learn more about ways to decrease infant mortality rate, and they can take that back to their home, they can take that back to their friends and their family, and then the word spreads, and it's all to decrease their mortality.
Exactly. So another thing that I want to add about all of our classes, we make them inclusive to the entire family. So it's not just educating mom, it's also educating dad, also educating grandma, because we understand that grandma, well, mom won't be the only person watching baby. Grandma will be, friend will be, uh, dad will be, so it's just trying to be inclusive to the entire family. And the, another reason why I'm here today is because OEIs are a community-driven effort, so we need the community's input. So we are hosting a home team meeting in which you guys can be involved. You, it's, uh, it's a time for the community to come, for you, for us to update on what you guys have been doing. I will have our epidemiologist here to give you a more look at the data because I'm not a numbers person, but, um, it's definitely a time to get feedback from you all, to see if what we're doing in the community is actually working, because we're constantly evolving and we're constantly trying to improve so that our efforts are, uh, being reached to all the right audiences.
Sydney, what did you call that? You called it a home...
A home team meeting, and I have flyers for it. Mm-hmm. It is, uh, next Monday at 6:00 PM at the library.
Which one?
Here, the Forest Park Library. Mm-hmm.
On, on Northland?
Yep.
Um, have, have you all, um, partnered with Hamilton County Early Childhood, um, Services?
So I actually, like, I'm a person that I, I like to go to places, so I went there and I introduced myself. I met someone, I believe his name is Cedric.
Yes.
And, yeah, I met him, and I did get his contact information. I forwarded the home team meeting information to him, and I don't know, was it safe sleep, because I'm still fairly new. I'm still trying to get the hang of things. So we're definitely open to hosting any type of safety classes with anybody in Forest Park, really. It's not just daycare providers. If you know any organizations, facilities, we're definitely open to accommodating all those.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions or comments, Mr. Hodges?
Just curious, does your, uh, 45240 area, are you including parts of Springfield Township in there, or is it the Forest Park boundary or actually the 45240 zip code?
So I believe that they look at the zip code as a whole, so 45240.
Okay. And, uh, speaking in terms of the high rate, do you have an average number?
So if you come to our home team meeting, we'll have all those numbers for you. I'm not the data person. We have epidemiologists on our team that can really tell you, break down the data for you. So I, I have handouts, and it has a little bit more about the data, but I can't really break that down for you. I'm sorry.
Last thing, do you have a card or flyer?
Yes, I do. Let me just pass these down. And my information is on all of that.
And again, your, your meeting is next Monday at what time at the, uh, Forest Park Library?
Yes. At 6:55 Way Cross Road, uh, Monday, April 23rd, 2018, from, 2018, from 6:00 PM to 7:30.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Johnson, quick comment. Um, Sydney is a member of our We Thrive, and so, um, she is a part, with our partnership with Hamilton County, um, Public Health Department, so, um, she's been very supportive. So, um, thank you for the information.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you both. We'll move, move now to item number five, report of standing committee. The first of those being Public Safety, Councilwoman Ness.
Yes, thank, thank you. Sorry about this. Thank you. Um, yes, um, all I have to report is that we have an upcoming meeting on Thursday, uh, April 19th at 5:00 PM, uh, here in, uh, here at City Hall, uh, Public Safety Committee meeting where we will discuss, um, we'll discuss police relations, um, and safety for community members, uh, as well as our, uh, men in blue. Uh, in addition to that, I guess we also will be, um, in May 17th, um, the Glendale Body Shop, I guess, is going to be doing an event, um, focused with our men in blue, and so I'm sure that they will, uh, also be excited about that. That concludes my report at this time. Mr. Mayor.
Any questions for Public Safety?
I got a question for her. Uh, um, Ms. Ness, I don't think it has anything to, to Public Safety. I just wanted to ask you a question. I, I was given a flyer, I think, that you were passing on?
Um, no, I didn't pass, where?
About, um, something that you, it's gonna be at, um, the school.
The Bethany Retreat Center?
Right.
Uh-huh.
I was, I just wanted to know, were Forest Park students included in on this?
Mm-hmm.
I was just curious. Okay. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Councilwoman Ness? Councilwoman Ness, I have no items listed on the agenda for the work session of the 23rd. Do you have any to add?
I do not, sir.
Next, uh, committee reporters, ways and means, Councilwoman Herbie.
I only want to remind, um, residents that, uh, the first Saturday in May, May 5th, is the Citywide Yard Sale, and that would conclude my report.
Questions for Councilwoman Herbie. Hearing none. Um, Councilwoman Herbie, I have no items on the agenda for you. Do you have any to add?
Sure.
Next report is Community Development, Mr. Burns. Mr. Burns is absent. Uh, anybody on the committee who want to report for him? Uh, I will make, uh, there will be one agenda on, one item on the agenda for the work session on the 23rd, and that would be the continuing discussion of, uh, surrounding Mill Road 3. Next report would be Law Committee, Councilwoman Collins.
Mr. Mayor, I do not have a report from the Law Committee at this time.
Any questions for Councilwoman Collins? Hearing none. Councilwoman Collins, I have no items on the agenda for you for the 23rd meeting. Do you have any to add?
No, I do not.
Next report is, uh, Human Resources Committee, Councilwoman Holt.
I do not have a report tonight, thank you.
Questions for Councilwoman Holt? Hearing none. Councilwoman Holt, I have no items on the agenda for you for the work session. Do you have any to add?
No, I do not, thank you.
And next, uh, Public Improvement and Facilities, Councilwoman Moore.
I do not have a report at this time, but I do want to remind everyone that our 27th Annual Gospel Fest will be April the 21st at 6:00 PM at Dayspring Church, so we hope everyone can come out, and we hope the weather is nice. We moved it to April to avoid the snow, but it looks like, um, it's kind of following us. But please come out.
Any questions for Councilwoman Moore? Hearing none. Uh, Councilwoman Moore, I have no items on the agenda for you at this time. Do you have any to add?
Um, no, I do not.
Next committee report is Intergovernmental Relations and Communications. That's my committee. I have no report. I'll answer any questions if there are any. And I have no item listed on the agenda for that. Next item is item number six, the mayor's report. Um, just briefly, this, and this is the regu, this is the last regularly scheduled meeting for this month. The next reg, next council meeting would be on May 7th. Uh, the only significance to that for, for, as far as I am concerned for this report is that May 5th, as was stated once, would be the Citywide Yard Sale, but also...
My birthday.
It is her birthday, as she says. And in addition, in addition to that, it will be also, we will also be doing the, uh, in conjunction with the, uh, AK Sorority, uh, the annual shredding in the parking lot. I believe that starts at like 9:00 in the morning and runs to 2:00. So if you have materials that needs to be shredded, it's free. Uh, bring them over, we will shred them. Um, also, uh, Councilwoman Herbie or Council, Councilwoman Ness, I believe that after the yard sale, there is usually, and I don't know if you all are doing it this year, there's usually a truck for collection.
And I think, I think the paper shredding, the, the yard sale is from 8 to 4. I don't think the paper shredding's that long.
9 to 2, that's what we always...
Is it? Okay, all right.
What I'm talking about, the, the...
For the, for remaining materials?
Yeah.
Yes, I think, um, the, I think it's the St. Vincent de Paul truck that'll be out there.
It'll be out in the municipal parking lot back here.
Okay.
And residents can bring their, you know, even if they don't want to participate in the yard sale, they can st, yards, garage sales, um, they can still bring their unwanted items or items for donation to that truck.
Okay. That would, in my report, I would ask, answer the questions if there are any. And we will go to item number seven, City Managers' Report. Mr. Hodges.
Thank you. First, I'll report that we're in the process of, uh, completing the next community newsletter, uh, that we call The Progress. Uh, after tonight's council meeting, we will finalize it and send it out, uh, as of tomorrow. Also, I'll report that the departmental reports have all been completed. They have been included in the council packet. They've also been placed on file with the clerk of council for public inspection. I want to remind, uh, council and the community that we are working on, uh, this year's Jazz Festival, uh, that we hold locally in Forest Park. Uh, just to clarify, uh, in the past, that has generally been done by an outside organization, and we learned early this year that they would no longer be doing it, but it is so closely associated with Forest Park that is viewed as a Forest Park event. Reality is, it's always been done by, uh, our art reach, and they're not doing it anymore. So we were somewhat in a scramble to determine whether or not we were gonna do anything, and in light of the fact that we were not doing the Pops concert, that was also an annual major event, uh, we undertook the, uh, task of doing the Jazz Festival for this year. Uh, and thankfully, our Economic Development Director and other staff members have been working hard on that. I say that in part because I know there was some mention that the Parks and Recreation Commission had not been, uh, as involved. I don't know if they've ever been really involved in it because, again, this has always been an outside organization, and the city contributed, financially, we contributed a small amount, and operationally, we were of assistance, but, um, that's also to say that we want to send the invitation to any members of the Parks and Recreation or any other members of the community that are interested in participating in the planning of this, they could get involved. The final point on that, we're actually, um, going to be working with an outside organization to put on the event because it's a major event, and we got a very short window of time to put it on. What we were trying to do mainly is just salvage the fact that Forest Park is associated with the Jazz Festival. People look forward to it and everything else. Uh, but we have to make decisions of what we're gonna do for next year. So we're basically getting through this year and trying to make it, uh, function in a manner that the general community wouldn't see any interruption. But without the, uh, staff stepping in, there would be none, and people would be looking for it. But there will have to be plans for next year if you want to continue it, if you want to drop it. Of course, you'll have a chance during the budget reviews and everything else to discuss it, but it's just something to be looking ahead on. Uh, the last item I would report is that I have, uh, provided a letter and an appointment of Bill Arns as our next police chief, and I'm, I'm very, uh, proud to, uh, to make that appointment, but that appointment is subject to the concurrence of city council. So on tonight's agenda, there is a, a motion that I think will be offered, and I would encourage council's concurrence in the appointment of Bill Arns as police chief. Uh, that also is one of the items we would, uh, place in our progress newsletter, but it's all subject to, again, the concurrence of council. So that would conclude my report. I would respond to any questions if there are any.
Questions for City Manager? Hearing none, thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda, item number eight, other reports. First of those, then Law Director, Mr. Wykoff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, you, of course, have a motion regarding a liquor license application by Hamrow Restaurant. And I wanted to explain a little of why we're not protesting. Under, however revised, Code forty-three oh three point two-nine-two, there are specific reasons for which you could file an objection. And unfortunately, under subsection two A, it's specified that zoning is not one of those reasons. But the issuance of a license does not affect our zoning code. So there's a disconnect there in that Hamrow can get the liquor license and hold a liquor license, and as long as they don't sell for onsite consumption, they haven't violated our zoning code. But obviously, people don't spend thousands of dollars getting liquor licenses just to sit on them. So it's a dynamic situation. I think our staff is gonna have to monitor that issue. I have written the owners explaining our zoning prohibition and advising them that if they do sell onsite, which would have to be established by our staff or the police or whomever might see an onsite sale, then the certificate of occupancy will be revoked. That is really our only enforcement power. I suggested to them that they make life easy and withdraw that application, but I can't force them to withdraw, nor do we have a basis for objection. So as long as they don't sell onsite, they're in compliance. But if they do, the certificate of occupancy would be withdrawn. I also had an opportunity to review a contract request from Parker and Lynch, who is assisting with looking for the Assistant Finance Director position. And finally, Ms. Collins is right, I did not understand her question, obviously, because I didn't address it clearly. But to make it clear, because this may apply to any of you at any time, you can always voice an objection at work session when an item is brought up. But when you get into the council meeting, whether it's an ordinance, a resolution, or a motion, there's always a period given by the mayor or the presiding officer for comments. It's during that comment period you should voice your objection. So I hope that clarifies your question.
Yes.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much.
Any questions for Law Director? Hearing none, thank you, Mr. Wyecroft. Next report is Clerk of Council, Mrs. Dirksen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to report that Resolution Number zero-nine dash twenty-eighteen was posted as required. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Clerk of Council? Hearing none, thank you, yes.
Were you not able to get in touch with the two candidates for?
Yes, they'll be here on the seventh.
On the seventh?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Clerk of Council? Hearing none, then we would move to item number nine, Unfinished Business and General Orders, their motion. Councilwoman Herbie.
I would move to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate days and read for the second time by title-only ordinances, Number zero-four dash two thousand eighteen through zero-six dash two thousand eighteen.
Second.
And moved in second, that we suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate occasions and read for the second time by title-only, Ordinance Number zero-four, zero-five, and zero-six dash twenty-eighteen. Is there a discussion?
Only that this was read for the first time two weeks ago on April second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on the motion to suspend?
Collins?
No.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Nuss?
Yes.
The motion to suspend passes five-zero. First item on the new business is item A, Ordinance Number zero-four dash twenty-eighteen. Would the clerk please read this ordinance by title only?
Ordinance Number zero-four dash twenty-eighteen. Enacting a revision, enacting a revised Chapter one fifty-two Building Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Forest Park, Ohio, to revise Chapter one fifty-two Building Code to adopt the twenty-seventeen Ohio Building Code while retaining the twenty-thirteen Residential Code of Ohio without conflicting changes to those codes in accordance with Ohio law.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I would move to adopt Ordinance Number zero-four dash two thousand eighteen.
Second.
And moved in second, that we adopt Ordinance zero-four dash twenty-eighteen. Is there any discussion? Councilwoman Herbie.
Yes, this was read for the first time two weeks ago. It's now scheduled for our second reading and formal vote on the first of two ordinances related to our periodic update of our Code of Ordinances that cover our building codes. For the most part, we update these codes in order to stay in compliance with dictates from the state, as well as also periodically realigning our standard fees to make them comparable with surrounding areas. I would urge adoption of this motion. Ordnance, sorry.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on Order zero-four dash twenty-eighteen?
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Nuss?
Yes.
Collins?
No.
Ordinance Number zero-four dash twenty-eighteen passes five-one. Next item on the agenda, item B, Ordinance Number zero-five dash twenty-eighteen. Would the clerk please read this ordinance by title only?
Ordinance Number zero-five dash twenty-eighteen. Enacting revisions to Chapter one fifty-four Miscellaneous Land Use Regulations of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Forest Park, Ohio, to make minor corrections to the General Administration Sections zero-one, zero-four, zero-seven, and major changes to Subchapter E Supplemental Building and Site Requirements consisting of requirements deleted from Chapter one fifty-two Building Code, which requirements were removed from the Building Code so as to allow the adoption and enforcement of the Ohio Building Code and the Residential Code of Ohio without conflicting changes to those codes in accordance with Ohio laws to accommodate recent revisions to the Ohio codes.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I would move adoption of Ordinance Number zero-five dash two thousand eighteen.
Second.
And moved in second, that we adopt Ordinance zero-five dash twenty-eighteen. Is there a discussion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, this represents the second of two ordinance related to our periodic update of our codes of ordinances that relate to building codes. And these are changes being made to accommodate coming into compliance with state codes. And I would urge adoption of this ordinance.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on Ordinance zero-five dash twenty-eighteen?
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Nuss?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Ordinance zero-five dash twenty-eighteen passes six-zero. Next item on the agenda is item C, Ordinance Number zero-six dash twenty-eighteen. Would the clerk please read this ordinance by title only?
Ordinance Number zero-six dash twenty-eighteen. Enacting revisions to Section zero-nine Building Permit Inspection and Plan Review Fees with minor coordinating revisions to Section three of Chapter one fifty-six Comprehensive Fee Schedule to the Codified Ordinances of the City of Forest Park to update building department fees.
Motion.
I move for adoption of Ordinance Number zero-six dash twenty-eighteen.
Second.
And moved in second, that we adopt Ordinance zero-six dash twenty-eighteen. Is there a discussion?
Yes. The Comprehensive Fee Schedule, one fifty-six, is proposed to be revised because Forest Park fees have not been revised since twenty-twelve. To bring the Forest Park fees more into line with those of other jurisdiction and to attempt to simply update the schedule, it should not note that what, Number twenty-six, was posted six days prior to the meeting. And I urge adoption of Ordinance Number zero-six dash twenty-eighteen.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on Ordinance zero-six dash twenty-eighteen?
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Nuss? Yes.
Collins?
No.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Ordinance Number zero-six dash twenty-eighteen passes five-one. Next item on the agenda is new, under new business, is item A, Ordinance Number zero-seven dash twenty-eighteen. Would the clerk please read this ordinance in full?
Ordinance Number zero-seven dash twenty-eighteen. An ordinance amending Chapter ninety-six Miscellaneous Regulations of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Forest Park, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. Whereas threats of personal injury and property damage have been observed arising from incidences in which an owner, keeper, or harbinger of one or more dogs has failed to properly confine them, thereby disrupting the public peace, safety, health, and welfare of the inhabitants of Forest Park, now therefore be it ordained by the Council of the City of Forest Park, Ohio. Section one, that Chapter ninety-six of the Forest Park Code of Ordinances be amended as set forth in Exhibit A, attached heretofore and made a part of this ordinance. Section two, that this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, and welfare of the inhabitants of the city due to the threat of injury or property damage, and it shall take effect upon its passage.
Is there a motion?
Yes. I would just like to put emphasis on the fact that, I mean, this has been read in full. Says there's no need for, oh, I make a motion, okay, I make a motion to adopt Ordinance Number seven, zero-seven dash twenty-eighteen.
Second.
Sorry.
It's been moved in second, that we adopt Ordinance Number zero-seven dash twenty-eighteen. Is there a discussion now?
Now. Sorry about that. This has been read in full, so there's not a lot of discussion that's needed. But I would like to put emphasis on the fact that this came to be because there has been continuing issues of dogs running loose in one particular neighborhood to an extent that it does not appear that our current regulations allow for sufficient penalty for noncompliance. So this is why this came about, and I urge adoption of Ordinance Number zero-seven dash twenty-eighteen.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk then please call the roll on Ordinance zero-seven dash twenty-eighteen?
Moore?
Yes.
Nuss?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Ordinance zero-seven dash twenty-eighteen passes six-zero. And so that item on the agenda would be a motion. Councilwoman Herbie.
I would move to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read by title only, Ordinance Number zero-eight dash two thousand eighteen.
Second.
It's been moved in second, that we suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read by title only, Ordinance Number zero-eight dash twenty-eighteen. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on the motion to suspend?
Nuss?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Excuse me, Councilwoman Nuss, I'm sorry, but I didn't hear what you said, yes or no.
I said yes.
I'm sorry, thank you. Just checking. The motion to suspend passes six-zero. Clerk, would you please read the Ordinance Number zero-eight dash twenty-eighteen by title only?
Ordinance Number zero-eight dash twenty-eighteen. An ordinance amending Ordinance Number zero-three dash twenty-eighteen. An ordinance amending Annual Twenty-eighteen Appropriation, Ordinance twenty-eight dash twenty-seventeen, to correct a clerical error.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I would move to adopt Ordinance Number zero-eight dash two thousand eighteen.
Second.
And moved in second, that we adopt Ordinance zero-eight dash twenty-eighteen. Is there a discussion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, this is a housekeeping item to correct a clerical error in reporting the departmental and fund totals of the State Highway Fund Public Works capital outlay that was reflected in a previous ordinance. It doesn't change the action that we did, but it corrects the resulting fund totals. Basically, when we added seventy thousand dollars, a formula in the Excel cell doing the calculation didn't pick up the already existing amount. And so instead of producing a hundred and forty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars, it only showed the seventy thousand dollars. So it's a simple typo correction, and I would urge adoption of the ordinance.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on the ordinance?
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Nuss?
Yes.
Ordinance Number zero-eight dash twenty-eighteen passes six-zero. Next item on the agenda is item C, a motion. Councilwoman Collins.
This is a motion to-
To make the motion.
I make a motion to direct the Clerk of Council to notify the Ohio Department of Liquor Control that the City of Forest Park does not request a hearing regarding a liquor license request for Hamrow Restaurant LLC, DBA, Hamrow Restaurant, six-seven-seven Northland Boulevard, Forest Park, Ohio, four-five-two-four-zero. Second.
And moved in second, that we pass a motion that directs the, that we pass a motion that directed Clerk of Council to notify the Liquor Department that we're not objecting to the request of the restaurant, Hamrow Restaurant. Is there a discussion?
Yes. This is a new restaurant that opened around the fall of twenty-seventeen at the same site as the Forest Park Restaurant that closed around June twenty-seventeen. This is a rather simple motion, but there are a few issues surrounding it that makes it a bit more complex. We like the fact that this is, by all indications, a legitimate neighborhood restaurant and very consistent with what we would like to maintain in shopping center and community. We wish them long-term success. But the reality is that it is a real struggle for small neighborhood restaurants to find long-term success. And we have seen it over and over again where they ultimately change hands and become nothing more than bars and lounges. Our zoning codes are set up to where they are approved, they are approved to operate at their current locations as a restaurant. But once they start serving alcohol, then they fall under a classification of a bar lounge, which is then prohibited at that location. At the same time, the Liquor Commission basically says that we cannot file an objection to their liquor license request using zoning as a basis. To use zoning as a basis for filing our objections would therefore be frivolous. So a motion would be in order to direct the Clerk of Council to notify the Ohio Department of Liquor Control that the City of Forest Park does not request a hearing regarding a D-three liquor license request for Hamrow Restaurant LLC, DBA, Hamrow Restaurant, six-seven-seven Northland Boulevard, Forest Park, Ohio, four-five-two-fourty. We are not requesting a hearing because our objection is that the granting of a liquor permit will change the zoning classification from a restaurant to a bar in an area where we do not permit any new bars or lounges. This would lead to the restaurant losing its certificate of occupancy, causing unnecessary trouble for the business and the city. The state is very clear that they do not accept local zoning as a basis for an objection. So we must simply note that we have no objections of the kind that the state would consider and that we are not requesting a hearing.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, let it be known by the sign of voting aye?
Aye.
Posed? Motion passes six-zero. Next item on the agenda is item D, a motion, Councilwoman Nuss.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd have a motion to concur with the city in- Excuse me?
Go ahead, mister.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have a motion to concur to the City Manager's appointment of the police chief.
Second.
And moved in second, that the council concur with the City Manager's appointment of the Chief of Police. Is there a discussion?
As we know, Assistant Police Chief Arns, I'm sorry, has been with us for quite some time and has done a very, a very nice job. And so I urge that council accept this appointment from the City Manager to assume the police chief's position.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to concur, let it be known by the sign of voting aye?
Aye.
Posed? Motion passes six-zero. Next item on the agenda, item E, motion, Councilwoman Holt.
I would like to make a motion that council convene to an executive session to discuss personnel matters, review recruitment process for the new city manager.
Second.
And moved in second, that we convene at the executive session for personnel matters, mainly to review the recruitment process for the new city manager. Is there any discussion?
No.
All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by the sign of voting- All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by the sign of voting, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry, you're right. This is a roll call vote. Clerk, please call the roll on the motion to convene into executive session.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Nuss?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
The motion to convene into executive session passes 6-0. And I would add that there will be no official business conducted, no votes taken in the executive session, which should be a very short one. And when we are done, we will come out of the executive session. After we will join the executive session, reconvene the meeting, and immediately adjourn the regular meeting. We are now convening into the executive session in the back.